Coming up next, starting at the end, a regularly scheduled meeting of the Edinburgh City Council. On the council, Mayor Ramiro Gatta Junior, Mayor's spokesman, Daniel Jan Vias, Councilmember Jason Benioff, Councilmember David Salacar Junior, and Councilmember Dana White, City Manager's advisor, City Manager by Rayana, and City Attorney, Josephine Summers, and so on. And now, live from Edinburgh City Hall, the Edinburgh City Council.
Welcome to this evening's regularly scheduled meeting, December seventeenth, and by my watch it is six oh one P M. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I do see visibly that we do have all members of council presence this evening. So we do have quorum. We're going to start as we do every council meeting with a prayer. We have Pastor Ryan Gatta here from Palm Valley Church. Would you please rise for a prayer?
Father, we come here today and we thank you for this great city of Edinburgh, Texas. Lord, we know that you placed every citizen here for a reason. Lord, I pray over this meeting. I pray for all the items on the agenda. I pray for wisdom. Lord, I thank you for you are sovereign. And in this season of Christmas, we just praise you and thank you for sending your son down for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
He chose to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to move on to item two, certification of public notice.
Yes, the mayor of the city was closing her closing six open meetings at on December thirteenth, twenty twenty four, at seven fifty P M.
Thank you. Item three is disclosure of conflicts of interest.
Yes, under state law, a local government official is required to disclose a substantial interest for themselves or certain family members and abstain from voting on matters related to such a conflict. Are there any conflicts disclosed related to pending matters of the day's agenda?
No, no, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can move on to City Manager's report.
Yes, City Mayor and Council. Today, on the City Manager's report, I would like to announce that according to the National Association of Town Watch's National Night Out, the police department, the Edinburgh Police Department, has achieved a remarkable milestone, placing ninth in the nation in the one hundred thousand to three hundred thousand population category for its exceptional National Night Out program. It's in the competition that's sponsored by the National Association of Town Watch. More than thirty cities nationwide competed for the top ten spots in this year's program. Edinburgh standing among entries from cities such as Pasadena, California, and South Park, Virginia. Edinburgh has distinguished itself as only one of five Texas cities to earn a place in the top ten. So this recognition underscores the true dedication of the Edinburgh Police Department and the residents who've come together to make this city a safer and more connected place to live. Let's give a big round of applause for Edinburgh Police Department and the community for their support in making this milestone a reality. This is ninth in the nation, Mayor. So I really want to recognize Chief Haini Ayala, and I would like for him to come up to the podium and just say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor Council, how are you all? Chief, thank you, Mr. Ayala, for that and for the recognition. This is an effort, citywide effort. Two of the officers working here tonight are in our C O P unit, and they're the brains behind it all to make it happen. And so the opportunity to be able to engage in the community the way we have, all our efforts event, it has grown over the years, it's just becoming more prosperous, and being able to recognize it against other cities across the country is something that we've really, really enjoyed. So we've got from seventeen to eleven to nine, and next year we hope we can even get even, even better into the top five. We appreciate all your support, what you do to make National Night Out where it is today, and the C O P unit that gets to go with the rest of the city.
Thank you, City Manager. Chief, I just want to say on behalf of myself and the council speak for this person, but I think, I don't normally try to speak for them, but I can tell you that on their behalf as well, that we appreciate all that you all do, the police department. I know this is a year long affair. A lot of people don't realize that we have this event once a year, but it takes a lot of work. And I want to thank all the businesses that sponsor and step up to the plate to help our police department, because it couldn't be what it is without the community coming together. So congratulations, Chief, to you and the entire department, and to the community as well. Well done.
Yeah, very much, thank you.
Okay. Okay. I didn't see it on the agenda.
I know. My name's very interesting. So many of your officers, yes, I'm very sorry. I'm very sorry.
Congratulations, Chief. You're a very good man, Chief. Well, you're welcome.
Congratulations, Chief.
They're right here. Well done. All right, and then we have a proclamation this evening for Employee of the Month, I believe, November twenty twenty four.
Please ask for the month of work, so the month is November twenty twenty four.
City Mayor and Council, we are here to present our Employee of the Month for the month of November. Rorongo Reyes, he's a lieutenant with the fire department. And I'll have Mr. Fire Chief, Omar Garcia, say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor Gatta, I'm Council, Omar Garcia, Edinburgh Fire Chief. It's an honor and privilege to stand before you. Tonight, I speak about one of our outstanding contenders, Rorango Reyes, who has earned a devoted service recognition as Employee of the Month. As a fire chief, it's an honor to work alongside so many dedicated men and women who put their lives on the line every day to protect our community. Each member of our team plays a vital role keeping our city safe and on top of the law. But tonight, we're here to recognize Rorango, who constantly goes above and beyond all the duties. Rorango not only is skilled compassion understanding, but he's also a second generation firefighter, continuing the legacy of service that runs deep in his family. His commitment to his profession and unwavering dedication to his colleagues and the citizens we serve truly set him apart. Whether he's answering calls at all hours, providing mentorship for younger firefighters, or staying calm and focused in the most challenging situations, Rorango has emphasized what it means to be a public servant. His selfless and tireless work ethic makes him an inspiration to fellow firefighters and a trusted member to our department. Thank you for taking this time to recognize Rorango's professional service. We are grateful for his hard work, his passion for the job, and for his incredible example, which is for all of us. It is a true privilege to have him on our team. Thank you very much. AKA buddy. Mayor Council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here. It's been twelve years, right? When these guys here next door gave me the opportunity. So I'm extremely grateful. I'm deeply honored to have been receiving this award. I want to thank the chief and the commissar for recognizing my work. But you know what? It couldn't have been possible without my incredible team that I have with me. The driver, Philip Yanova, the firefighter, Armita Longoria, firefighter Jason Salinas, and firefighter Julian Flores, that make my job a lot easier. And all those guys are extremely capable of getting this award as well. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. And I just want to say, what you just said right now, that it's reason enough why you should be recognized. You know, it's not about itself, he's recognizing everybody else in his crew. And we thank you for your service, everything you do for our city. And we thank your family too, because I know I say this often, but it's true. It's a family affair to serve our city. And we thank you and your family for all you do for our city. Congratulations. All right, we're going to move on to item six, public comment.
Yes, the mayor. The Edinburgh City Council, that's the specific portion of the city council meeting to be dedicated to public comments. Public comments, and then just three minutes, I'll be taking time. Please close upon the comments, please. My interest is that council will not respond to public comments. The first public comment is Mr. McTirey regarding twenty fourteen, officer Chavez, public concern about construction.
Good evening, gentlemen. We were contacted by residents on Caesar Chavez Road because in the process installing a sewer line, looks like water line also, the developer, the contractor completely closed off the street. Disposal started at the corner of Caesar Chavez and Canton and proceeded south. There is a school right there also. It has been a month of problems for these families on the corner. So what were the residents upset about? The contractors just showed up one day, blocked off the streets, and started digging a canal and big huge holes for sewer lines. They did not talk to the people. Families were not advised concerning how long it was going to take north, where they should park during the construction. Drag rates were dug up, but a big yellow little caution ribbon was located along the street, and several elderly people were escorted through their homes to ensure that they did not fall into the ditch. You could say, what more could you ask for? You could ask for the contractors that could anticipate what was going to happen when there's children and buses arriving at school in the mornings or when school is letting out in the evening. The result has been no mail, no access to the driveways, and in a crisis, no access to emergency services. This means walking along the street to your home when most of the family members are over sixty-five years of age. Therefore, thank you, and I'm talking about the E T J, but I know they came to the city to get the place in your sewer line where services did not exist. But contractors need to understand that there is more to installing a sewer line and digging a hole. Also, thank you, Mayor, for going by to see the situation. I know you did, but saying that you would discuss the problem, and I don't know if you did with the county. I did call Ellie's office, and we're trying to find out what's going on. This is also a city problem, even though the county has said that it wouldn't. The address is twenty eight fourteen South Caesar Chavez, and we need to take care of it. And this is why when they come here and they, oh, I promise we're going to do this if you'll let us have the permit or whatever, they do not follow through. Tonight, I'm asking everyone to please keep praying for Israel and that they can win this war, that they did not start, and that we can get in our hostages, put all the hostages that are over there back. And so I hope y'all have a Merry Christmas. And I didn't have anything on the agenda, so that's your Christmas present.
Thank you.
The next public comment is Ivan Garcia regarding item eight eight. Take your questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Ivan Garcia. I'm here representing, representing the stock holding L O C. We're here for item eight eight. This is for construction of a new quick car wash on the northeast corner of the intersection of Canton Road and State Highway I sixty nine C. And this is a state of the art facility that would provide some urban sustainability and water conservation. We are requesting a variance to my radius requirement for this project. One thing that I wanted to highlight is that the living distance between our proposed location and the existing car wash, which is actually at the northwest corner of Clofner and Freddy Gonzalez, is approximately one point three miles, but the actual driving distance is two miles. Furthermore, there are currently no car washes on the east side of I sixty nine C, with the highway serving as a significant, um, man-made physical barrier and buffer. And basically, there's nothing on that side. Another thing that we wanted to highlight is water conservation and environmental protection efforts with a quick car wash. It's very efficient on the water use. The facility used advanced reclamation on our system, which basically reduced the usage to only ten fifteen gallon versus eighty ninety percent, which is an eighty ninety percent decrease from the regular car washes. Some water protection, um, none of the quick car wash, uh, water will be discharged into some system. It's a state of the art facility with filters and everything. And it focuses on environmental safety practices, which uses eco-friendly soaps for the supporting the city's sustainability goals. And I'm here to entertain any questions that the council might have on the item, so. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Next public comment is Officer M B K regarding item eight, to explain tax revenue growth.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to go right behind my engineer, Ivan Garcia. My name is Oscar, and he's a senior tax agent. And the revenue that it's going to generate for the city that we need for our cities, our sewers and stuff like that, is going to generate over, in the first year right now, currently is at twenty nine hundred dollars. It's a minimal tax. It's just taxing on the land. Once the construction starts, it's going to rise three hundred and thirty percent increase to twelve thousand six hundred. In the final completions, which will be the third year, it will generate over twenty five thousand dollars annually. In a ten year span, we're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that in property taxes that we desperately need for our city infrastructure. So I'm asking for this variance to be approved. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Next public comment is Obed Montoya regarding serious.
Mayor and City Council, I feel like I'm moving Hollywood to Yellowstone. Anyhow, I want to thank Mr. Judge Booths, you just arrived here. But I do believe we missed a point, where Mr. White's been here. He was one of the original founders of Edinburgh. And I look at that sign every day I come here, City Council, nineteen fifty-eight. Our city holds, we got four, we got four city awards. Anyhow, discussing the case, like they say in Hollywood, I'm looking at the video, and there's three seats that are missing. They're right there. They need the chairs like you have right there, right here. And I'll pay for that. I deserve that. I deserve that. We should do that, Dan, we think we should. It's the action. Put a little budget, and also give a pay raise to the employers, the police department. And I know, Dan, that tonight, my passing torch towards Jason, the mayor pro temp, and I congratulate you. There's a lot of things we're holding a torch, Jason. Congratulations. Me despido con ustedes. Atam.
Thank you, sir.
There's no public comment here.
All right, that being the case, Council, if it's ever been okay, I just see Judge Booths come in. I want to move on to item thirteen C, if that's okay, everybody. I want to take this item at this time. So can we get a motion for that, or can we just go to that item till here?
You can just take that item out of there.
All right, Council, I'm going to ask for consideration of item thirteen C is under appointment. Go ahead.
Discussion and consideration of possible actions to appoint one or more associate judges and authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into contracts for professional judicial services with the appointed associate municipal court judge.
Motion to approve. Question. Grab motion, and second approve. Just for clarification, this is for the recommendation of Judge Booths, is that correct, on the, as the sign says? As you all be clear. Yes, okay. All is in favor of the motion. Please rise right now. All is both in fine. Motion carries. We're going to go back to item seven, City Council presentation of item eight.
Presentation of the Republican Tax Collection Court Board decree about October one, twenty twenty three, to September thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today, we have Rizelli Rivera Alasat with Leinberger, Goben Blair, and Johnson to present the city's Edinburgh delinquent tax collection report for the fiscal year ending nine thirty, twenty twenty four.
City Mayor and Council, my pleasure to send back to you the delinquent tax collection services report for the city of Edinburgh fiscal year end, October first, twenty twenty three, to September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Our delinquent tax collection program on behalf of the city of Edinburgh continues to focus on two basic premises. The first is to work with the taxpayer first, and secondly, use the tool of litigation only as a final option to collect. During this fiscal year, we completed eight demand mailing selling over twenty five hundred statements to delinquent taxpayers within the city. We initiated or received over two thousand phone calls. We knocked on seventy-three doors within this community to educate and inform folks about how to get into a payment agreement with our office. We had forty-five payment agreements and three hundred and twenty-one payoff requests. Regarding litigation, we have filed sixty-eight lawsuits, disposed of seventy-one, and we currently have pending one hundred and eighty-four lawsuits representing over six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars owed in base penalty and interest. We also regularly collect tax, conduct tax sales and resales on judgments with little to no effort paid on behalf of the taxpayer. This year, we conducted five tax sales and one resale on behalf of the city, pricing thirteen properties for sale. Three of those sold a tax sale, one of those sold a tax resale. Several properties were pulled due to a payment agreement on behalf of the taxpayer. Two of those were struck off at tax sale due to no due receipt. Our firm also collected over ten thousand dollars in municipal rent on behalf of the city as a courtesy. Those are vacant lots and such things that the city has to go out and upkeep for the community. Regarding our collection highlights, if you are collecting for us compared to the prior year, we collected over six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in base tax, over two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in penalty and interest, for a total collection to over nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for the city of Edinburgh. Looking forward to the next quarter and the fiscal year, we will continue to advocate for the city of Edinburgh in our litigation efforts, monitoring accounts involving bankruptcy, continue our mailing program, and schedule property tax sales only as necessary. That concludes my collection report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for your presentation. Anybody have any questions from the council? I just want to thank you all for all the work you do on behalf of our city.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item eight.
Presentation on draft of the city of Edinburgh's twenty twenty five legislative priorities for the eighty-ninth legislative session.
Mayor and Council, at this time, we have our city attorney, Josie, and our assistant city manager, Jay Grant, getting ready to present our legislative agenda.
Mayor and Council, this is a draft of the legislative priorities that we have established for the city of Edinburgh going into the eighty-ninth legislative session. Legislative session will begin January fourteenth, twenty twenty five, and will end on June second. Friday morning, afternoon, the twenty twenty five is the deadline for bills. However, there is no deadline for local bills. And so I want to make sure that we all know that, or keep that in mind. As far as we anticipate, there will be priorities that we expect the legislature and the state will focus on, which are border security, property tax reduction, water, whether it's wastewater, water reclamation, water improvement projects, and information technology in the nature of artificial intelligence issues that will be affecting local government. So that's what we anticipate we're going to see from the legislative session. But these are some of the general priorities that we've put together.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have two times assistant city manager. In October and in November, staff met collectively, and we met individually with different department heads to basically come up with general priorities that we'll be targeting in this, you know, next legislative session. And these are listed for you, public infrastructure, local authority, economic development, health and welfare, public safety, education, information technology, and open government. The priorities that staff collectively as a team came together. As far as public infrastructure, we believe that it's supporting legislation that will assist with strengthening our power grid and local water utilization efforts. This is going to be key. Support for legislation that relaxes requirements for impact fees to help with future development costs. Support for legislation that will assist with costs related to funding improvements and maintenance along state highways is going to be a priority. Support for legislation to address water and wastewater treatment plants and environmental quality and waste management. And support for legislation that will continue to provide resources for flood normalization and drainage improvements. And finally, support for legislation that will enhance transportation infrastructure expansion.
Under local authority, we're interested in supporting legislation that will protect our municipal authority on addressing issues and needs specific to our local community. As you know, in the last legislative session, there was legislation that was put forward that limited local authority and made changes specifically to how we can address issues in our E T J or with annexation. And so if you'll see down at the bottom, there's support for legislation that will address the current limits on that authority. And we expect to see some legislation in this session that's either going to further that or clean up some of the legislation that was put forward the last time. In addition to that, we are interested in supporting legislation that will help with the growth and expansion of the airport. It's key to our development here in our community, as well as oppose legislation that would take away from the local authority and create unfunded mandates.
In terms of economic development, we identified to support for legislation of the device we need for property tax relief. Support legislation that allows tax credits for projects related to affordable housing. Support for incentives to supplement economic development strategies and recruit and retain employers and employees. Support legislation that invests in education and job placement programs to support the local workforce and economy.
In the area of health and welfare, we're looking at opposing legislation that would limit access to healthcare for low income and socially at risk and vulnerable population, as well as support for legislation that will provide funding for parks development, including linear parks, hyphen bike trails, forestry projects, and other healthy living initiatives that are key to our city's growth. We are interested in supporting legislation that will assist with the preservation and expansion of additional green spaces. Support for legislation that will expand access to museums, libraries, and cultural arts, and continue the aspect of education that we were trying to address as well under economic development. And support for programs offering rental assistance, affordable housing, and funds to address community needs.
And Council, in terms of public safety, support for legislation that would increase funding opportunities for public safety for community and neighborhood placing. Support legislation to address mental health initiatives for first responders, detention, transport, crisis intervention, de-escalation, and training. Support for legislation that will assist with disaster recovery planning. And support for legislation to assist municipal courts with unfunded mandates, reporting requirements, mental health measures. Uh, and support for legislation to assist municipal courts with unfunded mandates, reporting requirements, mental health magistrate, and alternatives to sentencing.
And under education and information technology, we're looking at increased support for legislation that will assist libraries to include access to technology, training, and educational opportunities. Support funding for access to broadband and assist with local education and jobs. Support for IT-related issues that we continue to see affecting local government for cybersecurity, modernization, infrastructure costs, technology improvement, and training, as well as support for assistance in responding to the challenges in the work, in the workplace due to artificial intelligence.
And finally, in open government and transparency, uh, support for legislation that will allow for alternative methods of publication, which newspapers no longer being in existence or in limited supply and circulation. Uh, support for legislation that encourages, or support for legislation that encourages local transparency efforts. And support for PAC funding and the use of, uh, one percent of cable franchise fees for communications. So, these are the, these are the priorities that we identified, uh, in talking with the staff, uh, and collectively meeting on these things.
Right, and so we welcome any input, any changes that you would like to see, any, any additional direction that you would like to, to give us. Um, we're gonna bring back the final, uh, draft with a resolution for approval, so we could send it on to the legislative delegation for the area and, uh, work with, continue to work with city staff, management, as well as yourselves and our legislative consultant to move these issues forward on behalf of our city.
Thank you for your presentation, and really, I'm concerned, any questions or?
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you go back to the one with the mental health?
Yes.
This goes to, this goes to, yeah.
There's support for legislation that assists the mi- municipal courts with, with unfunded mandates.
Right.
Reporting requirements, mental health, magistrate.
So, in the, in the last legislative session, there were some changes in reporting requirements and, and, right.
Really going towards the mental health part, 'cause right now, unless something's changed, the municipal court judge can't do extraction. But we have to, the officers are having to go find a JP, or the, the, the community has to find a JP to do that.
That's right.
And that's something maybe we can ask them to look at, maybe, uh, you know.
Give them that authority as well.
Oh, yeah, 'cause that'd be nice to give our community.
Additional revenue support.
Additional revenue, and, and also because it is our municipal court, and that's who they should be seeking, you know, I think, assistance from first, 'cause it's not a higher court. I think it's not a higher court, it's just, it's just, it's just. Do you agree, Chief? Or this is, this is may help the community a little bit on mental health warrants, if we can add it into, uh, municipal court?
My name is Anaxis Court Administrator for, for the municipal court. We are currently doing the section twenty eight, is what we are doing.
That's what it is.
So, that is something that we've implemented in twenty twenty four, so we are doing that. This is basically for the sixteen twenty twos that we're actually mandated to do anytime we have anybody that is, that is, that is not competent when they're being magistrate.
That is the chief.
Okay.
I'm gonna bring it up, uh, Chief, I thought it was before, I mean, we wanna make sure we have, uh, you know, the, already, check it out with you, what already did twenty twenty four, so. I mean, I told you the case before, so I appreciate y'all starting that, so, yeah.
Yes, that is something that we, that has been going on for a while, and I think that a lot of it is the dis- the disconnection that there is with the county. I know that the county has a mental health, uh, you know, division, department, or whatever it is. I just wish that there was some involvement with municipalities, because we do have that disconnection anytime there is a magistrate. As a matter of fact, we had one the other day, and of course, we have the DA calling us regarding the case.
Are you talking about criminal, or are you talking about?
Criminal, on higher, on higher magistrations for the sixteen twenty eight, and that's what that was before.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, how may I, uh, Department? I do also want to advise that we did enter into, uh, grant a couple of taxes, and we do have mental health officers and professionals that, that work together and, and help service the mental health community, uh, in regards to sections forty-six or forty-eight.
Thank you, I, I do have one comment, Josie, um, a great idea was presented, uh, I think it was when Mayor and I were meeting with McAllen, uh, last year. And there was an issue with, with, uh, animals and animal rescue. Apparently that at this time, only doctors can spray and neuter, and that leads to a big problem of being able to spray, spray and neuter. Um, someone suggested that we could work with legislation to let tech, or have better, uh, more numbers of people who can, uh, spray and neuter. Think that will help with the problem, can we?
Okay, I can, I can.
Have you ever been to that? Anybody else?
Uh, I, I was just, just a comment, uh, uh, we have this TML party, right? Uh, and I just, I think that we can do the piggyback, they have a big lobbying effort in Austin, and I just, I wanna make sure we're, we're following.
We will coordinate it, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And the other thing, our, our server for technical is to call me about annexation authority. Uh, I don't see that on here, it's not a bit something that.
It's on local authority.
Oh, you haven't, okay. But is there legislation we're gonna seek to file, 'cause he, uh, advised me that he's open to filing to legislation, um, so.
Yeah, with his office.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah. Um, and then ETJ issues, um.
That's also on there.
Is, is that on there? Is there legislation that we're gonna, you know, have someone file, 'cause that, that is a big issue for our city. I mean, our cities grow, and, um, there was some legislation passed recently, Council, that, as y'all know, it, uh, allows people to opt out of being on our ETJ and those things, and it just, um, it presents a challenge, I think, for public safety and everybody, uh, but, um, uh, I just, I know it's common, but I just wanna make sure we.
Right.
Coordinate our efforts if there is someone that's gonna file for that, maybe we could help support along with TML, 'cause that has a big item with TML as well. And then the last one I have is, uh, just regional parties. I know normally the Rogan Valley Day, and I just wanna make sure we're coordinating efforts, uh, for any regional parties that, uh, we can include as well, that ties in with, with the rest of the region. Um, Montecristo, nineteen twenty-five, connecting with Henry County for itself, it's a huge project, that, you know, transportation project, I just grabbed as an example. Uh, by the Rogan Valley Partnership, has the, uh, those priorities still, we could check with them, that we can maybe incorporate in our agenda as well. All right, well, this, thank you. Uh, this is a presentation, Council, there's no action needed, so, thank you.
Right, but we will bring with the additional conclusions that we doubted, we will bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item, uh, eight, uh, eight first.
Consider the radiation request to the city's drop contingency plan, item five, public workshop, chapter fifty-three, water resignation, water conservation, drop contingency plan, section fifty-three point thirty-three, of the Edinburgh Municipal Court of Warranties for the property identified after hidden property, phase one, lot two, and located at the northeast corner of Tancun, number six, two eighty-one, Brentwood Road, requested by SAC Holdings, LLC, and is allowed per section fifty-three point thirty-two.
Motion approved, second. Grab motion approved, and a second, any discussion?
Yes, yeah, I just wanted to say, um, for other developers out there, this, this, uh, car wash thing is something I brought up years ago. Um, I'm glad that we have a radius. I like this project because of the information we have here, uh, eighty to ninety percent reduction in the use of the water. It gets filtered, doesn't have any chemicals going back to our stormwater system. Also, anything on the east side is always a big plus. So, anybody out there brings stuff to the east side, well, we're always ready to, to see something developed that way. And just wanna thank, all the informa- information, very, very informative, and the presentation, thank you.
All right, there's now the discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, uh, item nine, wording of this, item eight.
Consider wording, RFP number twenty twenty-five dash zero three, Edinburgh Municipal Art and Culture Movement, SLR Building Contractors, LLC, in the amount of sixteen seventy-eight thousand, and authorize the city manager to execute any stoppage related to this.
Motion to approve, second. Grab motion, the second, approve, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, item, uh, ten, resolution, item eight.
Consider resolution, authorizing the city manager to execute the advanced funding agreement for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, tax deduction alternatives, set aside, pass a program, active taxation network, enhancing tax, Pronto Street, and MetLife Boulevard, Trail, and Cool Range Park.
Motion to approve. Grab motion, approve, your second?
Second.
Your second, any discussion?
Yes. Myra, I just have that question, I still can't get the math in my head. I go down to the bottom, where it says the event funding agreement, the Texas Department of Transportation is funding the project eighty-eighty for twenty ten local grant, local max. Then we got the allocated amount for the improvement, so I'm assuming the whole project is a million one? And then we get to the million one, and then we say the Edinburgh will be responsible for approximately a hundred thousand. So, if the whole project is a million one, twenty percent is cultured to two hundred thousand, I just, I just couldn't get the number somewhere.
Good evening, Mayor, the Council.
We're looking at the same way, you put, uh, all these projects that get, uh, these type of funding, they also get, uh, an economic distress community discount, which is, that's why, that's why it comes lower than that.
Okay, yeah. I'm looking at the.
It does seem that, I know that it's, yes, uh, if they'll have a comment in there, uh, because there's, uh, things that are, uh, that are down and added, uh, community directions. But it's very generic, right, of how the breakdown is done, right, except.
Well, if you understand, I just wanna change the order, come back to you, we missed a hundred thousand dollars on.
And that's a good point, that number that shows on the city, is that enough to exceed? It's enough to exceed unless the project over the amount that affects allocation, is it based on this, or based on this, uh, for construction, yes?
Yeah, it is true. We're at a hundred and five thousand, and any project cost overruns, so there could be.
Correct, so if it's, uh, the construction is above the amount that we have allocated, then, uh, then I would be responsible for that.
We're responsible, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my check's up.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, anybody else, anything else?
Uh, the only thing, Council, I do wanna state, and, and just to announce that the community disclaims under the Rogan Valley MPO, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Uh, so, I, I just wanna advise in case you're not for our county commissioner, Ellie Quodis, has been appointed chair of the MPO. Uh, so I heard staff to, um, make sure we coordinate this request with our office, and make sure we, uh, keep up to date, uh, but that's a good thing. Great, great, these recent floor, great enforcement, city, and our county commissioners in service chairs, so, um, I, uh, uh, just wanna speak up, but, uh, also, just to add to this, this trail, is that a continuation, or, of, you know, is it connecting to?
It starts, uh, on, uh, Kanal, and, um, about ten, there are twelve streets, uh, of the Mano, and then it goes to Veterans, and it actually goes through, and it's connected to, uh, our new Friday Trail that's coming in, uh, it's, it, it goes to the park, and then it actually goes to, uh, at Bart's House, uh, and, uh, the, the food, it's on, uh, Friday on Monday.
Great, great. All right, all in favor of motion, please raise your hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, item D.
Consider resolution, authorizing the city manager to submit a gratification to the Federal Emergency Maintenance Agency, the Department of Homeland Security, under the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, assistance to clarify your grants, program, and execute grant documentation related to.
Motion to approve. Grab motion, uh, and a second, any discussion? If not, uh, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, item, uh, you having instructions, item A?
Consider authorizing the city manager to maintain to entry department agreement for the obligation of the American Rescue Plan, ARCA, CONV, and state and local fiscal recovery fund for an amount of sixteen hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-three, and sixty cents, and execute any documentation related to.
All right, Council, is there a motion? Motion approved, second. Grab motion, and a second, any discussion? Uh, if not, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, item D.
Consider authorizing the city manager, or, or designate me, the authority to utilize the design built for community method authorized by, of chapter T, chapter twenty-two, twenty-two sixty-nine of the Texas Government Code, when it is determined that the specific project meets the requirement of state board in the LDC, and the city finds it is the best project in the re method that provides the best funding to the city.
Motion to suspend the rule. Uh, is the motion, your second? Second. The second, all in favor, suspend the rules, raise your hand. All opposed, same time.
I just, I, I've got a question, are we gonna change the way we're, we're build buildings and stuff? Are we gonna, does this change the way we go off the bid buildings and build by design?
For this specific, for this specific procurement, um, it has to be project specific, so, um, if, if the, the Council chooses to go through the design built procurement process, we can do it for a specific project.
Are you still gonna come to us per, per, okay, that's, that's what I was.
Is that correct, Josie?
Yes.
I just wanna like it.
Right, so this is intending to authorize the procurement in this manner for a specific project, um, and, and.
But will, will make that decision if we want this, this decision to go, this, to be traded out, or the project for a design, or?
Right, and to be clear, we're still bidding off the project.
Yes, and this, this determination just needs to be made prior to any solicitation, and so that's why we're at the, for, for, right, on this matter.
Yeah, that's all I need, yeah.
Yeah, no, no problem, thank you.
All right, uh, motion to approve? We have motion approved, there, we have a second. Um, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, under item twelve budget, we have item eight.
Consider proving the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, budget tax receipts in categories for the general fund, utility fund, airport fund, deputy gross golf course fund, dollar waste management fund, and hotel occupancy tax fund as regards to annualized fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Motion approved, second. Grab motion, the second, approve, any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, item D.
Consider proving the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, budget tax receipts in categories for the hotel occupancy tax.
Motion to approve, second. Grab motion, uh, and a second, approve, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, uh, under thirteen, item thirteen appointment, we have item eight.
Consider forming him a member of the city, of the Edinburgh City Council, Anthony Proten.
Motion to approve.
Oh, yeah, I, 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 you're right, you're right. Thank you. Uh, yes, the motion, uh, is to appoint and pass the torch to quote our, our resident, Jason DeJohn, as the next Mayor Proten.
Second.
Well, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Just, uh, thank you all for trusting me, uh, to be the new Mayor Proten, I got some big shit to fill, but thank y'all for giving this opportunity, thank you. Nice, nice. Fortune, man. All right, it's, it's, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same time, our congratulations, uh.
Congratulations, yeah.
Great, I didn't even think about it. Okay. It's, it's, oh, I did not know that, oh, we could have taken out, oh, wow, we, I could have, I mean, go ahead, yes.
I'm gonna.
Take your time.
You should wait for a moment.
All right, council, we're gonna go to the.
My team.
Okay, congratulations again. Uh, we're gonna move on to item B, council, and I know we have several board, but if it's okay with y'all, a lot of reappointments, if you can take a motion to reappoint all the board, is that okay? We have motion. And a second, uh, for all the, uh, boards listed, just for reappointments, uh, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same time, and I think for the record, if you wanna read them, I apologize.
Yes, consider appointment to the following city rise of board, council commissions and committees, building board of adjustments and appeals, four members, twenty seven and eight council, two members, cultural authorities, the various boards, two members, public library board, one member, building board of adjustment, one member.
I thank all the residents that signed up to serve again, thank you. Uh, under contested agenda, council, item fourteen, um, there's items A through G. I was gonna ask for item A and D to take out, is there any other item? To, to vote on that you'd like to take out and discuss?
No.
All right, can I have a motion, because we just, item A and D and approved the rest?
So move.
We have motion again, and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, uh, motion carries, um, okay, item eight.
Consider a motion to pulling the American Rescue Plan, uh, ARPA, KARON, VIRE, and local district recovery fund program budget amendment.
All right, is, is there a motion or question approved? We have motion, and a second. The only, uh, thing I wanted to see, Miss Calvi, is I had asked, uh, city manager, I know I see this portion here, but this is the ARPA funds, and I'm actually okay with what we're looking to do here to, uh, approve the amendment, but on the, I saw the, and passion, I felt that, as I mentioned, I wanted to see, I still see some balances on some of the projects, uh, so I did wanna see the, uh, when, when these projects, uh, started, uh, and then the percentage completion. So I, I just, I just wanna see that, I've seen, uh, I know some of these projects, they take a while, I get that, but I do wanna see, uh, the percentage completion, because I think twenty twenty six is when is the deadline, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And I know y'all are monitoring it, but I, I'd just like to see it, just to see if there's a project that perhaps may not make it, that we may need to look at, uh, either reallocation or change course, and I'd rather build sooner than, than later, so that we can, you know, reallocate those funds appropriately, so.
After tonight, we'll have successfully obligated all the funds, so we're gonna meet the December thirty first, twenty twenty four deadline, the December thirty first, twenty twenty six deadline that you mentioned before, that suspend all the funds.
Right.
We're on track to do that. Um, the, the big construction projects right now that are, um, underway into the new service center, that's eighty percent complete. And, um, the improving community health and resilience through the arts project is about fifty percent complete. The anticipated end date for that is December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Um, and I neglected to mention with the service center, that, that estimated end date is April fourth, twenty twenty five.
So the two projects, just for serious, I was, uh, City Hall improvement, improvement shuttles, and I've, we've only spent like thirty five hundred dollars, so we still have a two hundred thousand on that.
Improvements to City Hall was, a project was comprised of AC units, so that project is ninety eight percent complete, we're just sending the, the payment, sending invoice for that.
So that's, the units have been installed already, and.
Yes.
So they have an invoice, so, or?
Um, no, no, we haven't, we've, we've, um, been asking for that, but they haven't had that yet.
Okay, what about the downtown waterfront generator?
The downtown waterfront generator, that one is only ten percent complete, because we're waiting on the generator, so.
Okay.
There's a big demand for those.
Yeah, I'd just like to see maybe a couple of comments, when we initiated the project here, when we ordered the parts, and then, just where we're at, yeah, if we can.
Yes, we can, we can do that.
All right, that's all I have, uh, there's, no, nobody else, if any questions, can, uh, is there a motion? Uh, excuse me, we have motion, the second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, item B, I believe, council, I asked, that to be taken out, because there was a correction.
Yes, ma'am, there is a correction on this item, um, the amount should be forty six thousand, six hundred eighty nine and eighty cents. I will read it with the correction. Consider authorizing the purchase of four square boards from the provider, Necro Sports LLC, through the Texas Local Government Purchasing Cooperative, by board in the amount of forty six thousand, six hundred eighty nine and eighty cents.
Move.
All right, we have a motion, the second, uh, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, um, we're gonna move on to item fifteen, other versions. Counsel, is there any items, uh, to direct to? If not, uh, move on to item sixteen, executive session, there are motions to convene the executive.
So move.
Okay. We have motion, the second, uh, convene the executive session, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same time, we will not need to execute this special at six fifty three.
Item A, consultation with city chairman, item B, discretion of possible action regarding the purchase conveyance, exchange lease or value of real property, item C, personal matters, item D, deliberation regarding economic dividend mismatch.
All right, we're, uh, back from, uh, closed session, can I get a motion to reconvene? We have a motion, and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same time, just want the record reflected, there was no action taken, uh, in executive session, I believe we have, uh, some extra item.
Yes, Mayor, under item sixteen B, I recommend a motion to approve the execution of a contract presented in executive session regarding conveyance of property described as a point four five acre tract of land out of an abandoned one hundred foot railroad west adjacent of block four, block one of John Colzner et al. subdivision in the city of Edinburgh, Idaho County, Texas, and authorize and erect the city manager to make execution in knowledge of then, modifying and delivering in the name of the city, and any and all instruments, agreements, and documents regarding sale of the property in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract, and to do any and other actions necessary or desirable for the city's conveyance of the property, including, without limited to, the execution and delivery of all instruments, agreements, statements, deeds, sign, appraises, deeds of trust, notes, bill of sale, affidavit, certificates, receipts, and such other documents as may be necessary or advisable to accomplish the conveyance of the property, pursuant to the terms of the agreement and as authorized by Texas Local Government Code, section two seventy two, point zero zero B one.
Can you turn on your mic this time?
It's on.
Oh, looks good.
I have a motion, there's, uh, we have a motion, second, or we have a second, any discussion? Uh, if not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, I believe we have item B, all opposed.
On item B, I recommend, recommend motion to proceed as directed as discussed in executive session.
So move.
All right, I have a motion, and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same time, motion carries, there any other items?
Your right hand.
All right, there are motions to be returned, so move. Uh, motion, second, and all in favor, raise your right hand. Return, thank you.
You gotta give me a.